Which the parents usually are much more educated. The ones that I've spoken with, they're more up to speed on things. Now, another thing that's very concerning is all these laws, all the people, all the players are above the law. How come our borders aren't closed? Why isn't the CDC up on charges here in Maine? Why isn't our legislature bringing charges through hearings against the CDC imposing their will upon us down here at this level? It's called the Tenth Amendment. They call it established science, established medicine. Then the doctors are... then why are the doctors and medical serum companies legally immune from prosecution and liability protection? It's incomprehensible, in my opinion, that you're even considering this. It's the heavy hand of government, it's called the police force, to impose this upon the parents. And it's through the public safety for the children, for the children. When in fact, you really don't care about the children. That's not the purpose. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Seeing no questions, thank you for your testimony. Kim Mader, Scarborough, called by Maggie Mader.
Maggie.
Mader.
Maggie Hadley, she's my daughter.
Oh, all right.
So I will, I actually have copies of her testimony. So yes, my name is Kim Mader. Good afternoon, Senator Reiki, Representative Gutten, and members of the Health and Human Services Committee. I know a lot of this has probably been said before, but hopefully, if you hear it again, you'll think, when you go home tonight, gee, we heard that a number of times, that must mean some things. My third child, who was here earlier, Maggie, was neurologically damaged. Oh, yes, and I'm here, of course, at home, LV606 as well as LV471. Maggie was sick with massive infections from the time she was three days old. Because she was sick so often, I thought it was very important to make sure she was fully vaccinated. I was very afraid that she would, because she had a, she was compromised in her immune system, that she would catch more serious disease. So I was really on top of making sure she was vaccinated. She clearly had a barely working immune system. Unfortunately, she continued to get sick, and by the time she was four, she had had at least 20 viral infections. She couldn't breathe properly, and she had had pneumonia for six months. She spiked extremely high fevers every few weeks that would have us rushing to the doctor or the emergency room. We were living in Massachusetts at that point, and had extensive testing from many pediatric experts in Boston that revealed an unspecified immune deficiency and encephalitis as indicated on a CT scan. She also had a massively inflamed GI tract. Multiple diagnostic surgeries revealed nothing. The doctors had no idea what was causing the brain and gut inflammation, and therefore had no idea how to treat it. It was never even mentioned that vaccines could potentially even be a factor, or could potentially be making her worse. So no one even brought up the idea of looking at vaccines and their safeties, it was just, keep vaccinating her. What that left Maggie with was a body that seemed to be on fire. She couldn't stand anything touching her head, she screamed incessantly, she never slept, she couldn't stand car rides, she could never be in a crowd or even stand in the sun. And my world shut down for 11 years because her world had shut down. When Maggie was six, we moved back to my home state of Maine, and I decided to take a different approach to her health issues. We had already put her on a restricted diet and removed chemicals from her house in an attempt to reduce inflammation in her body, but this proved to not be enough. With the help of new friends, I started to think that perhaps the neurotoxins in vaccines, like aluminum and other adjuvants, were at the core of the issue. So we pursued a type of therapy that addressed these underlying issues. And in the middle of a two-day evaluation at the center's headquarters, I was asked if Maggie ever complained of a headache. I said, "No, she's never said that." And the doctor responded, "Well, that's most likely because she always has a headache." And all that time, my child had no idea what life was like without massive head pain. At that point, we then embarked on a multiple-year, difficult, and extraordinarily expensive process of cleaning Maggie's body of toxins, rebuilding her immune system, and providing her brain a chance to heal and catch up. A crucial component of this was our right to sign a philosophical exemption, choosing not to have any more vaccinations that would have undone the work we were doing. And I'm really, I'm not crying, because I'm just really happy and humbled to tell you that Maggie is a very happy, healthy 16-year-old today. LV606 would strip this right from other families, which is why I am strongly opposed to it. In addition, I have to tell you that during those extremely difficult years, when the English major was trying to become a scientist, trying to become a legal expert on how to take care of my daughter, trying to take care of my other two children and run home, I also had to go into my doctor's offices and I battled many who thought that I was irreparably harming my child by not having her vaccinated. It didn't matter, that we had educated ourselves and studied the research ourselves. And there weren't conversations. I mean, I would, I'm happy to have conversations, there were no conversations, there were angry, one-sided lectures telling me why I was wrong. But the results are, I was right. I'm grateful, however, even though those were difficult, that those were just lectures, and it didn't lead to anything further than that. I know my time is up. I'd like to say again that I'm blessed to live in the great state of Maine where I had that choice, because Maggie was here today, and her injuries were treatable, but not all are. The DOJ reported that between November and February of this past year, there were 117 cases of vaccine injury that were compensated in vaccine court. Thank you for listening to my testimony, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Representative Bashan.
Thank you for being here, Mr. Reiki.
Yes, I am. There are a few from Scarborough who are here today, we might have one.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ashley Ryan, Scarborough.
Thank you, Senator Reiki, Representative Gutten, and members of the committee for all of your hard work today. My name is Ashley Ryan, I am 24, and I am a resident of Scarborough, actually as representative of Shawnee District. I would first like to speak strongly against LV471 because of the experience I had with my trusted family pediatrician and nurse practitioner. And I would particularly like you to listen to Representative Heimlich, too, my test so we can do... Excuse me. He didn't comment to have made today. Excuse me. Thank you. This is a family practice that I had gone to since I was a small child. I knew these doctors, I trusted these doctors, my parents trusted these doctors. In fact, my parents had become close family friends with my nurse practitioner, and had had her over for dinner at our home. When the HPV vaccine first came out, we were bombarded with all of the advertisements and marketing. Although I'd been previously vaccinated according to the CDC schedule, I was hesitant to get such a new vaccine. I was still very young, I was not sexually active, and I was well below the maximum recommended age of 26. Before heading to my annual physical that year, my parents and I discussed and agreed that I would wait to receive the Gardasil vaccine until more research and information was available. When we informed our pediatric nurse practitioner of this, she became argumentative and bullied myself and my parents for our decision. When I was out of the exam room with another nurse, she lied to and convinced my parents that there were no adverse side effects of Gardasil, and that I was at a high risk of sexually transmitted disease. I was 14 years old. When I returned to the exam room, she lied to me and told me that I had no choice in the matter, because I was a minor, and that at one, and that one day, I would be happy that she had made this decision for me. I now suffer on a daily basis from both rheumatoid arthritis and rhinocerous phrenumonon. Both of these are side effects that are listed on the package inserted of the Gardasil vaccine. I would also like to testify on LV606. The dictionary defines philosophical as relating or devoted to the study of fundamental nature of knowledge, reality, and existence. So I'd like to discuss the reality of the risks and benefits of vaccines. Vaccines have been classified by the federal government as unavoidably unsafe. Vaccine manufacturers are shielded from any liability, and they are not held accountable for the products that they produce. As they are unavoidably unsafe, vaccines have incredibly dangerous side effects listed by the CDC, including but not limited to seizures, brain inflammation, permanent brain damage, autoimmune disorders, and death. A recent Gallup poll has shown that Maine is the third least religious state in the country, with only 24% of Maine's population identifying as very religious. This means that the majority of Maine citizens rely on their philosophical beliefs and convictions more than religious doctrine. Eliminating the philosophical exemption sets a dangerous precedent by removing a parent's right to make sound and appropriate decisions for their families based on logic, critical thinking, science, and reality. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Questions? Representative Bashan.
Thank you for coming and sharing your story with us today. I'm sorry. It's a great honor.
Thank you.
Seeing no further questions, thank you. Let's hear from Beth Voucher.
Good evening, everyone, I'm Kayla Burke. I don't have a long testimony, but I just wanted to voice my opposition to LV471 and also LV606. Now, it's a fact that there have been serious complications from many vaccines. A man who spoke at the rally today actually lost his son after receiving vaccines. Now, he was compensated from the vaccine compensation program, but how do you compensate someone for a living soul that you can't replace? And now you want to force other people to take that risk with their child's life? If vaccines actually do save lives, then you can put those facts out there, because parents care far more for their children than the government or some large pharmaceutical company trying to make billions off of the risks of young lives. But the real issue here is not just the safety of vaccines, but it's about removing the rights of parents to choose, saying only that by the hand of professionals do you have the right to opt out. They've been saying, I agree with them when they say, where there is risk, there should be free choice, but I say where there is liberty, there should be free choice. I believe that we as Americans have the God-given right to choose for our children, and the government should not approach upon that. These two bills are a slippery slope. First, they make it very difficult for you to opt out, till one day they take away that right completely. And they've been, and then they take away your right completely as a parent to choose for your child. So I respectfully ask you to vote against these two bills. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Seeing no questions, appreciate your testimony. Is there another Burke here from Natchez?
Yes, there is.
All right. Your handwriting almost looks like you have the same first name, so...
All right. I'm gonna have to be read off by laptop, I apologize, everyone.
That's fine.
Good afternoon, my name is Kayla Burke, I'm from Natchez. I'm here in favor of Bill 1076, and I'm opposing both bills, 471 and 606. I just want to say a quick thing on parents having to go to, having to get a doctor's written permission to, you know, for whatever reason they don't want to vaccinate their children. Regardless of whether or not it is beneficial for a parent to be informed on the, on the potential consequences of refusing vaccinations, it is an impediment to parents' rights to force them to endure vaccination education when refusing preventative treatment for their children. This country was built on liberty and a person's right to choose, and that includes a parent's right in what they feel that is right for their children. Even if our government were to feel that it were best if everybody ate organic food and ate only healthy food, and then they made that mandatory, and it's proven that that food is healthy for you, regardless of whether it's proven or supported, it should never be enforced on people who don't want to eat like that. They should not be imposing their, their medical convictions on the public. I feel that in doing so, our government is greatly overstepping their boundaries, and I think that that is completely obscene. And I hope that all of you would recognize that, and just nip this totalitarianism right in the bud, and don't allow us to be, to be subject to a government who makes us choose preventative treatments when we don't feel that it's necessary or safe. And I'd like to leave you all with a quote from Benjamin Franklin, that freedom is not a gift bestowed upon us by other men, it is the right that belongs to us by the laws of God and nature. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Representative Bashan. Oh, there you go, there's a question.
I just wanted to understand this. Did you say you were in favor of 1076?
I am, absolutely.
Or you're opposed to 471?
Yes.
1076 is the bill to come.
Okay, so it's my understanding that 1076 is a bill that is, seeks to educate healthcare providers?
It seeks, I believe that's the bill that seeks that the parents should be notified of what's in the vaccines and the potential hazardous, you know, conditions that may follow.
So it's educating the healthcare providers to educate?
Correct. But what I'm saying is I don't want parents to be forced to have to go through the education just by, just because they refuse vaccination for their child. Because what, one of the bills is, I can't remember which number, but one of them that's trying to, that people are trying to pass, is that if a parent refuses to vaccinate their child, that they have to go through this, you know, education process of what might happen, and then they have to get like a written, like a documented consensus from the doctor that it's okay, and blah, blah, blah. And I think that that's ridiculous, that a parent would have to go through that process by refusing preventative care for their child. Do you understand? Yep?
And just for clarity, I believe it's, it's signing off that the conversation happened. But anyway...
Okay.
Yeah.
Regardless, I don't feel that they should even be subjected to it at all. I think that's so ridiculous.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hi. My name is Caleb Porter. I think that parents should be able to choose what they want for their children's vaccinations freely. I recently heard that vaccinations cause more bad things than good things. Think that people should choose what is right for their bodies and the good mind. Anyway, it's not that everyone's body is someone's care. Also, it doesn't matter what position you're in, when the flesh of humans equal, and everyone should care about each other. People all ages that have vaccines can be disabled or can cause death. Doctors may try to hide the risks of vaccines to make money, and maybe young, but I know what I'm talking about. I hope that this committee would have what it needs and to do what is right. And I would like to add, people need, I would like to add, people make money, money can't grow hands and build something. Money isn't everything. Money should not be the top thing that matters, people are more important now. I believe that the state of Maine should be free for anyone who lives here. Also, this could possibly even be one step leading to communism. Overall, I do not want LV471 and LV606 to pass. Thank you.
Thank you. Caleb, is this, is this your first time ever speaking in front of the legislative committee? Well, you did a very good job. There's one question from Representative Heimlich.
Caleb, thank you for coming. Could you talk with your parents about polio and ask them to go over the history of polio with you?
Sure.
Polio. Thank you.
Seeing no additional questions, thanks very much. I cannot read this name for the life of me, but it's someone from Brunswick, I think.
Laura Liner.
Laura Liner, that's it. It's because it went under the line. No, it's all right.
Senator Reiki, Representative Gutten, and members of the committee, I am Laura Liner, from Brunswick, Maine, and I'll be reading testimony of Dr. Suzanne Humphries, who cannot be here today, but she is in this room. I'm gonna also read excerpts for time purposes. Senator Reiki, Representative Gutten, and members of the committee, I am Dr. Suzanne Humphries, formerly of Bangor, and I'm writing to testify in support of LV1076 and in opposition to LV606 and 471. I'm a medical doctor, board certified in nephrology and internal medicine. I hold active unrestricted medical licenses in Maine and Virginia. After 10 good years as a nephrologist at Eastern Maine Medical Center, I resigned from my position, sold my share of my medical practice, and left because of the issues I faced regarding vaccination in my own patients. For me, the problems began with a hospital policy, which changed in 2008, to vaccinate as many patients as possible on the first hospital day, even if they were in acute kidney failure, heart failure, sepsis, or were cancer patients on chemotherapy. A pharmacist would go into the patient's room, show them one sheet of paper from the CDC with limited biased information, and offer them one or more vaccines. If the patient consented, which most did, an order was put into the computer with the attending physician's name, often before a doctor had even seen the patient or a diagnosis had been made, and the nurse would give the vaccine. Sometimes the order had my name on it, even though I would not have ordered the vaccine. I was not happy, and decided to speak to the hospital management about what I was seeing. So I put my concerns in writing, and meetings were held to discuss the issues of which I was not invited to attend. The result, I was told, that acutely ill patients would continue to be offered vaccines on arrival at hospital. I asked myself, exactly what is the science that says that these vaccines are safe for really sick people? I assumed that there were studies on the subject and writings in the medical literature in order for them to be so sure of the rightness of their policy. After all, it's science we're talking about. And the science is supposed to be all settled on the safety and effectiveness of vaccines. Because the hospital policies were centered on flu and pneumonia vaccines, this is where my research started. I submitted a written report to the administration, which I'm submitting to you. This paper outlines the many issues involved in adult vaccines and kidney patients. My position is that vaccines are not guaranteed to be safe, that ongoing production problems do exist, that foreign animal DNA and chemicals are in the vaccines which don't reliably protect. The public has given a false sense of security of the safety and efficacy of vaccination. There's no literature on the safety of vaccinating the kinds of sick people I tried to protect. I left my career, my financial stability, and everything comfortable and familiar in order to spend uninterrupted time researching vaccines in all aspects, the need for them, their manufacturing, the safety, and the other aspects that was related to the topic. I foresaw that this day would come, when parents would lose the right to refuse any of the 69 doses of 16 vaccines scheduled by the age of 18, the first being an aluminum-loaded vaccine on the day of birth. I have spoken publicly on many areas of infant immunity, kidney function, aluminum toxicity, and most of all, the vaccines, and most of the vaccines individually. These videos are all available for free on YouTube. No doctor walks away from a lucrative and successful career the way I did if there is no cause. Vaccination is a medical procedure done to healthy children, the outcome of which is not entirely known. Interestingly, it is almost impossible to find any studies looking at the metabolic impact of vaccines given today. But there are studies that show how cancer genes, autoimmune genes, allergy, and many other disease-causing genes are upregulated after vaccination. We have no studies looking at the long-term effects of this growing vaccination program as a whole for cancer, neurological disease, autoimmune diseases and the allergies, and other chronic diseases that have become epidemic in children at the same time the vaccine programs were ramped in the 1980s and 90s. If you think you are voting away the philosophical and religious exemptions of the parents of Maine in order to create herd immunity and protect everyone, you just don't have all your information. And worse, if you vote to remove exemptions, you are naive to the fact that you will be next in the line for barrage of vaccines as adults. If this legislation is passed, then you are paving the way for not just the aggressive vaccine policy of today, but of a future in which you will not be allowed to turn the clock back. I'm available via Skype with any questions you may have. Sincerely, Suzanne Humphries, MD.
Thank you very much. Representative Bashan, called by Representative Sanderson.
Thank you for delivering that testimony, and I, I don't know whether you can answer this question or not. You mentioned in the testimony that the immunization schedule changed in 2008, and I wasn't sure if that was, that they were immunizing babies right at, right at birth?
I can, I'll read exactly what she says in the sentence. "For me, the problems began with a hospital policy, which changed in 2008, to vaccinate as many patients as possible on the first hospital day, even if they were in acute kidney failure, heart failure, sepsis, or were cancer patients on chemotherapy."
Okay, so when you're talking about first hospital day, is that somebody sick coming in?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Representative Sanderson.
Thank you. Did we get a copy of the doctor's testimony?
That is coming.
That is coming?
Yes, that is coming, that will be submitted.
You got it all?
Okay. Yes, there is a lot more here, with pretty pictures that I didn't...
All right, and I guess maybe I'm, I'm wondering if, perhaps you can get an explanation, I'm not quite sure what you mean by upreg, upregulated, so if you could...
That is discussed in, in the testimony, I just was, I know I have four minutes, so it is in the testimony, she discusses that, and actually, she, this page of the testimony right here with the red box actually does a great job describing it, and just this graphic alone kind of gives you an idea of what that means.
All right, thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Representative Heimlich.
Thanks, yeah, I saw your testimony before, I was curious about your website, so I looked at it, and I noticed your discussion about vitamin C and potatoes.
And these would be Dr. Humphries' discussions, so I don't want to speak for her.
Oh, okay, all right, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Any additional questions? Seeing none, thank you very much for, sorry, she couldn't do this. Oh, why don't you, all right, no more questions. Representative Burstein.
Is, is she still practicing medicine?
Yes, yes, she is. Obviously, they're very different format, but yes.
Because I, I knew her a little bit, I think she turned, went into neophyte, didn't she?
She's studying, like, she's not going to say that.
We have a lot of hearing voices. You've been here too long. All right, thank you very much. Pat Truman, Hallawa? Is Pat Truman here? All right, I'll move right along. The Sulamans. There's three of them. Are they here? You can go whichever order three of you would like to go.
I'd like to thank the committee for holding these hearings today. My name is Natasha Sulman, I live in Gorm. Representative Sam Gorm just wanted that for me and my family on several occasions. I'm here to testify in opposition of 471 and LV606. And I think that there are a few things that have been not addressed, especially questions that Representative Stuckey asked about, so I'll try to address some of those. But first, I want to tell you my story as quickly as I possibly can. I have three children, they all have autism, varying degrees on the spectrum, two from later. My youngest was born in 2005, healthy, born on time, C-section, great APAR scores, and within 30 minutes, he developed a lung infection and had to have IV antibiotics and tube feeding for three days. The infection was pretty bad. And so we go home, and we start doing our well baby checks. After every round of vaccinations, within three weeks, he developed some sort of immune system issue. The first time, it was eczema. The second time, it was food allergies. The third time, it was projectile vomiting. And after his last vaccine, he stopped talking. I remember the day of his last vaccine. It was, I was really, really hesitant, and I sat there looking at that vaccine information sheet, and I grilled the nurse. I said, "So, these are the reactions that he could have. What's the timeframe? When would it start? When would the last day be?" And of course, not knowing anything about why I shouldn't give my kid Tylenol before shot, I gave him a shot, gave him some Tylenol before a shot, we got the chickenpox vaccine. And on the last day that the nurse told me he could have a reaction, he had a reaction. I brought my child in, and in fact, he had the chickenpox box on his torso. They looked at him, and they said, "That's not a reaction." Nothing was reported. And previous to that, previous to that event, there was one child visit where he received four or five vaccines. there was one child visit where he received four or five vaccines. And I mentioned to the doctor, you know, he's kind of vomiting a lot, you know, more than I think my other two children did. And she's like, well, you know, just keep an eye on it. And then after that, the next visit, they had to measure his head circumference four times. Four times. His head was so big that the nurse measured it three times, and the doctor measured it once. And they got me to a neurologist the next day, and he was still projectile vomiting. He was losing weight, his head was expanding. So she was nervous that he had water in the brain. Sends me to the GI doctor for the vomiting, sends me to the neurologist for the head. They do a little ultrasound on the soft spot. No water in the brain. No further explanation, no further investigation as to why my child's head was like that. And now we know he had a brain injury. But there's nothing we can do. Nobody said, call VAERS, or this is. I was, testimony was given earlier today that every patient is given a sheet to sign. I've never been asked to sign for a vaccine, ever. And I just want to say, and I don't want to go over, but I have a very supportive pediatrician. He understands, and he has told me that my son's issues were caused by vaccines. And this physician works in the same office as another pediatrician who came here to support this legislation. So I ask you to please oppose these measures and keep Maine kids healthy and let parents have choice.
Thank you very much. Could you restate your name?
Natasha Sullemann. Yeah, and I'll be sending something in. I just didn't. Any questions?
Seeing none, thank you very much. So are there two other Sullemans?
Yes, there are. I'll go next.
Hi, my name is Andrew James Sullemann. I'm from Great Falls, and I live in Florida. And my, not a lot of people talk about this, but I go talk more about a global spectrum, more like American slash the world spectrum for this. And I'm against all the laws, so, yeah. Anyways, continue onwards. I could just go, the ingredients? Markways in some vaccines, and that's basically, I think what someone has talked about, that's pollution from coal plants, but in a liquid form. And also, also they use some stuff as to make fake slime. Anyways, so basically, they put fake meat in your vaccines. That's what's happening, yeah. And also, they add aluminum, which is basically used for most technology purposes. And now, and also, I forgot which the name for a law, but it's trying, you can't get a, you can't get a physiological excuse for not getting a vaccine. You can't do that. That, I thought go talk about more religious. Anyways, that, you will get pressure from religion and the doctors and because you'll keep on denying. So, yeah. Anyways, going to global spectrum. The only countries that have either safe vaccines or don't have this problem in America right now is basically every country in Europe and also South Korea. But they could have this problem only because, only one reason is prevented, which is, which you can ask the question as to why. That is. Anyways, the reason why in Asia, not, they have the problem is because of pollution, and they really bad medicine, if I remember correctly. And I'm not sure about Australia and New Zealand. I think they're good. I think they actually might be counter us. The only, some of the only countries that don't have this problem. Africa, almost everybody's too poor there, so that's easy. And South America, the same story, but the only place that does have the problem, basically the capital cities to the countries. So, yeah. That's my testimony. If you have any questions as to why I said South Korea, then you can now.
Thank you very much. Is this your first time testifying in front of a legislative committee?
Yes.
Oh, well, congratulations. You made some very articulate points.
Welcome.
Thank you for being here today.
Do you want me to tell the reason as to why?
I think we got some more people to hear from, but thank you very much. All right. Evangelina Sullemann?
It's actually pronounced Evangelia, and I wrote my testimony on the Notes app on my iPod Touch. So I apologize for not being able to read it off of a piece of paper. Anyway, I am 14 years old. I'm from Gorham. I go to Gorham Middle School, and I oppose the bills LD 471 and LD 606. There is no proof that vaccines effectively resist diseases like they're supposed to, or that vaccines are safe for children mentally or physically. Before I started middle school, I was vaccinated for whooping cough. And guess what I got when I turned 12 shortly thereafter? Whooping cough, which made my asthma so much worse than it already was. Also, thanks to the vaccines I had gotten when I was very little, I now have ADHD, autism, anxiety, OCD, eczema, food allergies, and asthma. With all these risks, we should be able to have a choice as to whether or not to be vaccinated. Getting rid of philosophical and religious exemptions will take away our abilities to make informed choices, and this will also cause mental and physical health and immune systems of our children to worsen. Passing these bills also denies the liberties that we should all have as Americans. If LD 606 is passed, a doctor can deny someone the right to skip a vaccination due to religious or personal beliefs. By doing this, they're invalidating that person's freedom of choice in religion, which is highly un-American. And if LD 471 is passed, people who don't believe in vaccination will have